Okay, I will open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is seven oh one P M. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, meaning that members of the public, members of the board or applicants can participate here in Town Hall or remotely through this new link. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Good, Bill?
Ready.
Okay. Can we open up item two, Billy? Ready?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to item two. We'll open up. Is this, this isn't a hearing, is it?
No.
Okay, we'll open up the item for Parker Street and Old Marble Road. This is an approval not required and A N R requested by John Allen of fifty-nine B Old Marble Road in Maynard. Bill, do you want to give the board a briefing on this?
Sure, this is a a we will not require request. I where there is a, there was a landlocked parcel of land. You can see on your your exhibit I left you, and Mr. Allen is fragmenting each, each part into a lot adjacent to Parker Street. Most of these are non-conforming, so this is a benefit also in that it creates two of the three will be now forming lots. Um, and I think that's pretty much all there is with this. But we've laid out how we believe and this is consistent with A N R, and I think the board will find it is consistent with the criteria of the recognizing it as an A N R. And Mr. Allen, I don't care if there's any questions specifically about the property itself as well. Findings we're looking for are in section two, A, B, and C.
Bill, can you explain the significance of the highlighted numbers on table one?
The, the highlighted numbers are what what is changing just for proposed, so where the, that's what the changes would be by the action.
There are frontage numbers that's red.
Why is there a number that's red? Because if they currently are non-conforming. So in this case, you know, with twenty thousand square feet, it's just to draw your attention to it, which it did.
Questions, any more questions? So some of the lots do not meet the frontage requirements.
Yeah, and only twenty-nine B.
It wasn't saying minimum frontage is a hundred and thirty feet. An S two.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, well, the, the frontage is not being affected by this action. They're all going under rear of property.
Yeah.
So the non-conforming says is not being changed.
Not on the frontage part, that's correct.
Okay. The area lot size is going from non-conforming to conforming for all of them.
Yes.
All the ones that weren't conforming before.
That is correct.
And but our job is to ensure that the minimum frontage requirements are met, but since it's non-conforming.
And it's staying non-conforming.
Yeah, that's, this is, you, you want to make sure that the lots, there, there's no lot being created here. There's a lot being dissolved, so it's going the kind of the other way that we would normally do. So lot the, the parcel is, is being completely eliminated. So Mr. As is, you're not creating, you're not creating any non-conformity with the subdivision.
Do we typically ask fire department, police department, too? We view these as well?
Yeah, yeah, we did. We, we distribute this. And the, the, the property assessor is really the one that we usually get back from.
Did we receive any feedback from any entities in town?
Yeah, no, no, no objections to any of those.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add for tonight's meeting?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you have anything to add for tonight?
Um, um, no, I don't think so. Okay, I understand everything that's being said so far.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
So if the board noticed, the, the, the charge at this point would be if you've satisfied the, the determinations made that it, a subdivision is not being created by this division.
I'll make a motion that we determined the subject plan does not constitute a subdivision and is entitled to an A N R endorsement.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Does anyone need another minute? Bill, you good?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That's five zero to carry the motion, Bill.
Okay, do you stamp some in my larks?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
If you can pull, if I do that, we will have, I'll have these ready for you tomorrow. They close at noon tomorrow. But I will have them, you'll have one to pick up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, too. Thank you. Take care. Okay, let's open up the public hearing for fourteen to sixteen Hillside Street. This is continuance from October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. And Justin, good evening. Thanks for coming in. Okay, it's not, not, not your fault.
You can pull it, you can pull it on, it doesn't look very well.
Bill?
Yes.
Do you do you or Julie have anything to start us with, or are we turning this over to the applicant?
I can start you with the update from conservation.
Sure. Yeah, that's great.
And then advice, but I can definitely work together on this stuff. And you, are you good, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. So Justin came in front of conservation last week with a request for determination of flipability, which is R D A, which is the permit that you requesting the determination of the project within the Wetlands Protection Act. So a like COVID, a negative determination is a good thing. That means that you can involve with your project. A positive determination means that you have to go, your project was denied as a notice of intent. He was given a positive determination, so the project was denied as is, and it needs to go through a notice of intent. And in conservation, we never really say no, we say yes, bye. So that's really what that means. It needs to go to the next level of permitting. And there is a lot of concern around the, you know, potential parking and paving of, of the riverfront area. And so that's why the, the Conservation Commission voted against using a determination of flipability. And, and then I'll just read you the P's comments for the record. So they said, it appears that this property is within the riverfront area of the Atsaf River. It also appears to be within B L S F, which is bordering land subject to flooding and vague resources areas on site, as well as possible bordering vegetated wetlands, depending on a field evaluation, of course. If this parking lot expansion and there will be an increase in the amount of property service, the commission may want to consider an N O I as a more appropriate course of action. He needs to quantify the potential impacts to the resource areas and how the project would meet the current standards of the resource areas named above. So, yeah, do you guys have any questions for me on regarding that?
So this is based on the plan for the parking area with the rain garden? Correct. That's the plan that we saw at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so anything to do with putting parking in the back will need to go through a notice of intent.
Is everybody familiar with like a notice of intent, how, intent, how that, I'm probably only aware, but I'll, I'll stick up.
Go ahead.
A quick primer?
Yeah.
Would you like to? So a notice of intent is a, a larger scale permitting application. So for conservation, all of our permits are through the Department of Environmental Protection at the state. So we are a funnel for the state. So they, they give us recommendations. And sometimes the commission goes with them, sometimes they don't. A notice of intent is, requires a P to stamp those plans, requires flagged, wetlands requires a survey, a stamped survey. And so, and then just to submit the permit itself to the state, it runs you about two to three thousand dollars, depending on what you're doing. It's the way that we calculate the cost is based on how much disturbance is being done within a certain type of buffer zone. So in this case, the design that was originally shown was within the two hundred foot riverfront area, which is considered a, a resource area, those, that two hundred feet. And then it's also within the one hundred foot buffer zone of the wetland area, in this case, the Atsaf River. And there might also be a bordering vegetative wetland, so so Justin will need to go and get a survey with flagged wetlands on it, and that usually runs between two to three thousand dollars, you know. And so I tell people that a notice of intent, try to plan for about seven to ten thousand dollars for the entire process. Sometimes you can get that done cheaper if you can get the, you know, depending on who's doing your survey and who's stamping your plans and all of those things.
Black pride.
Yeah, exactly. But I, my recommendation to the board is to, you know, definitely make that decision of, of what Justin will be presenting you tonight, of yes or no. So that way he doesn't, and not pending conservation review because he's gonna have to go through conservation no matter what again, or the driveways, if he would like to repave them. And he can do that under a smaller permit, under the R D A. And so regardless of what you choose, just make sure you make that decision so that way he doesn't have to go spend the seven thousand dollars and then still not know what he has left for dinner.
So your recommendation, and I presume you're on board with this too, is that the planning board continues its review so that the applicant has certainty as he approaches N O I.
Correct, yeah, it's never, you know, the, the N O I will go through as long as he continues to provide the data we need. It's very, very rare that, that, the Conservation Commission won't pay outright denial. We have a long means, just like you guys have a long list of, of criteria the project needs to meet for a fill-out denial.
Okay. Well, so, yeah. Has a presentation when you're ready?
Sure. You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think just to start off the presentation here, of the original permit application for special permit was for four units. I have, as of today, resubmitted that for three units formally. So just as as a, I guess, piece of knowledge going into this.
And was that, is that a modification of the original application?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Yep, so that modification.
It wasn't a new application.
Nope, he just modified the existing based on your request. He just, he never did that formally. And so you guys couldn't necessarily approve, approve what he was suggesting before.
So just to kind of recap, three units in total. Two, three bedroom units are in existence on the upper two levels of the lot. The third new unit would be in the lower level of the lot. So just to highlight the changes from the initial submission, reducing the number from four to three units. You know, through the, however many months it's been, I think, maybe close to nine months. You know, we stopped the fire department and different things, so we've added stairs from existing paved areas down to the lower unit to make sure that there's plenty of access for emergency personnel. We've also added a deck to the building to access possible rear parking or side parking, depending on where we end up. Waste and recycling storage is, will be in the rear of the parking, in the rear of the area, regardless, and then we're looking to, to help with the, the rainwater management. And so adding a rain garden, even if we don't go the N O I route and we had existing driveways, we'll be adding some sort of rain gardens to help improve, you know, the, the conditions to the river. As they stand today, there's really no, water can just kind of rush down the driveways and there's only grass really to do anything about that. So again, I think we've covered this. The R D A was submitted last week and not approved. Just to recap, the first floor plan, second floor plan, so those are existing portions of the building. The basement is partially finished as it, as it was. But this would be the new lower level plan with entries through the side of the property. So the existing elevation, the proposed elevation, which candidly is, is almost at fruition. This is the existing plot plan. Air photos, that's the plot. Just wanted to highlight this. This is the existing area. So there's a large existing driveway here that goes all the way down into that hundred foot buffer zone currently, and then there is a driveway here. So this is the new plan to be shown tonight. And so this site plan would be asking the planning board for parking relief in two areas, one reducing the number of cars required from five to three. And then also relief from, let me just pull this up so I get the right relief from six point one point eight point one, which requires parking lots be designed to permit each motor vehicle to proceed to and from all unoccupied parking spaces without requiring moving any other parking area at all. Hence, you have those tandem spots on the lower part of the spot plan. And then after reviewing the, the guidelines, there is not a need for relief from dimensional requirements. As in six point one point eight, under Design General, parking areas containing only more than five parking spots shall meet the dimensional standards specified in six point one point one one, which are the the kind of more robust dimensional requirements for parking.
So because he's asking for the relief on the amount of parking, then he would have to then give additional relief on the, on the dimensional requirement.
So that's the plan. You can see here the rain garden, trash bin storage, snow, snow storage zone there, and then access to the rear here. And making sure that these parking spots are further down the driveway, so there's this access for emergency personnel, because that was mentioned by the fire department when they reviewed, just making sure that they had access. You know, and there's been obviously public comments regarding the, how tight the driveways are. So again, by moving this park in towards the furthest portion of my parking, I would actually create an alleviated situation for my neighbor on that side, which, which hopefully would be appreciated. So this would be what the plan would look like if we were granted parking relief. And then there's just the technical aspects of the relief, which I stated. And then, you know, I think the other request of the planning board would be the approval of the additional third unit, either parking approved with the relief or with the fact that we'd be going for an N O I to get that parking in the rear. And then with the rear parking, we would have two spots that are tandem, and so we'd still require relief from the same section of six point one point eight point one. Because one bar, one parking spot would be in tandem with another. And so this would be the updated site plan for the N O I path. This has been altered from the plan that was submitted to conservation based on the fact that what I presented to conservation actually had six spots, so it was actually one more spot than we needed. So looking back and just trying to make this as easy as possible, went back to five spots. Were able to utilize this driveway existing spot as one of our spots and then put four in the rear so that the intent is that we don't encroach on the hundred foot buffer with any of the impervious surface. Again, putting in an extensive rain garden in here. And then I think with either of these options, we'd intend of adding some sort of pathway or access for the residents to be able to enjoy the riverfront area as it comes to the property. I candidly didn't show it on these plans, but I just didn't know what conservation would or would not want in terms of that walkway. But understanding that, you know, the riverfront area is obviously a special place. We want to protect it through the rain gardens. But we also want to encourage the residents here to, you know, actually soak it in. And then I guess with either option with the rain gardens, we'd be using native plantings, pollinators and other things like that, so going through here. With the N O I version, we would be increasing the driveway by a little under seven hundred square feet. But we'd be removing almost a hundred and eighty square feet of driveway that's in the, that should say hundred foot buffer, I apologize for that. That's existing in the hundred foot buffer. And then we've been increasing the, the rain garden spot, the rain garden area to six hundred and seventy-five, could be seven hundred square feet. And then, you know, although they aren't perfect, there are technically room of driveway for six spots on, on site. And we'd be reducing that to five. So again, just going through some of the details, in talking with conservation, we added impervious snow storage area there, and reasoning for that is that we would be able to capture the runoff from that snow storage into the rain garden before it made its way to the river, thus providing additional filtering of that water before it could even get to the riverfront. Rain garden, here are some of the proposed native plantings that we've put in there. And native plants and pollinator species. So I think with the rain gardens, our intent is not only to help with the riverfront and protecting that, but also increase you know, pollinators, which increases, you know, all the other natural activities. We would also be adding screen for the parking and for the trash bin storage. And adding some, some native plants in the front garden areas as well. And so here you can see that we have the, the main access out of these two units, a third unit access out of here into this parking area. And that's just the plan there, so that's that's important, the presentation for today, and the rest is kind of the previous submitted responses. I think the, the main alterations from those original responses to the D O D requirements and the planning board requirements is just kind of the added importance of adding rain gardens, which are protecting the riverfront, and then adding in some access paths for the residents to, to enjoy the riverfront area.
Thank you. My first question is also partly to Bill. We presented two options for this evening. Obviously, we can't, or can't vote on two options.
No.
And the, the application needs to state obviously one option. So I'm presuming you're looking for feedback on the two options?
Well, let, let me just clarify that on, on these. This is a request for three, the special permit to allow three multifamily units. Neither of the designs of, you know, change that, of those two presented. I think that, that what the applicant is asking is, is one has, you know, the, the N O I path, but has obvious benefits, and one has other benefits and but each of them have some advantages in their case. And then the third path is nothing, you know, and just stays the way it is, two, two years. So the board is requesting a special permit for three units. The plan that accompanies it and what the board preferred would be, I think, what he is looking for clarification on. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, in order to move forward for the N O I, we obviously have to invest quite a bit, even to, to move forward with having three units, we have to invest in sprinkler engineering and all of that, and so we can't make Sprinkler engineering and all of that. And so we can't make that type of investment without knowing that we can have. You know, that we're approved for three units. Um, so we kind of get um in a chicken and egg scenario here. Um, I think the other thing too, even if we stay status quo, I do worry about. Kind of the um, some of the concerns that the public have had around parking. Um, because if we stay status quo, we would still redo the basement and so those units could turn into. Either four or possibly five bedroom units. And, you know, depending on, you know, I've read through the the mainer um. Uh.
How's about?
Housing plan, thank you. Um, and, you know, just with the current trends and how people live, you could end up with, you know, four or five roommates. Um, in each unit and not necessarily a family per se, um which could increase the parking. Uh, issues, you know, more significantly. Um, and that would be, you know, my understanding. Uh, by right. And so I worry about that plan where, you know, there's a potential to do something where we actually improve. Uh, the situation for the neighbors and for the community, so.
So just to clarify, he wasn't giving you option. He was, um, the way that we uh guided him through this is that. He's asking for for parking relief. So that's a yes or no. He's just showing you if you if you don't give the parking relief, then what does that? What does the plan look like? Um, because you could still approve the three bedrooms and say, no parking relief. And and that would be the the five spots in the back. Um, or you could approve the relief and the three units. Those are the, you have. Two things that you need to approve for tonight.
Questions on that from the board? Do you understand that? Possibly, possibly. Um, the the that my only. Thing I still need clarity on is that we're going to need to submit. Um, a final package and then the application that shows. One of the sorts of general site plans that were provided, right?
Yeah, one of the, i- if the board, whatever the board decides with a special permit. A plan would be associated with that special permit. Uh, that, so. We would want to have it um.
That's why we we had to prepare those. Yeah.
Yeah, as an exhibit that ties.
We can condition it that staff will make sure that the appropriate exhibits are attached.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So if whichever way you go.
So that we are not approving to exist, like, what is parking, what does that look like? We wanted to make sure that you guys knew exactly what you were approving.
Because it's really not a site plan, but it is a site plan in this. So we want a plan tied to this.
Yeah, right.
Uh, questions? Questions on what was presented from the floor?
If we go back to a image of a. Non NOI version. What happens to the wall?
The retaining wall?
Yeah.
In this scenario?
Yeah.
It stays within place.
So where's the extent to? On this inch?
It extends all the way down to here. Existing.
That stairway that you're shown showing there that would. Be over on over the wall or would it cut into the wall?
So, yeah, the current state um of the wall is there's actually about like a one foot eighteen inch. It's eighteen inches above the the driveway surface as it exists. So we would cut in down to that driveway surface so you could. You know, traverse straight through without having to go up and over that type of thing.
And what's the access to the basement unit?
So the access to the basement unit would still be here. Um, and so you'd be able to come down here and then um make your way around. So we put a paving, a paper solution around or a walkway path.
How does that affect? Fire department access with the car in that spot now versus? Though that didn't used to be there previously, right?
Uh, which portion?
The on the on the top of the single vehicle.
This car?
Yeah.
This is an existing parking spot as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and and candidly, we'll also make that. Spot um better because there is, there was an existing set of stairs here um to get into the building, which will be removed. And so. You know, the parking spot will actually be a much better, an improved parking spot from what it was um. When we acquired the property.
And you propose to ensure that that. Car in the existing location is not. Overpark onto the sidewalk. That's a substantial length, right? Space?
Sixteen feet is is. Is a a small car parking spot according to the um. Dimensional requirements.
If I try to four hundred point fifty in there, I'm tying up the sidewalk, right?
I'm. I would, I guess, speculate, yes. Um. You know, when we rent it, we're going to rent it with this into the parking spot and your vehicle has to. Sit in that spot and not park on the sidewalk, I think. Um.
You know, like paint a line on the back or something?
I I I I don't know how the city deals with any other parking, like there's only marks on sidewalks.
Not. Something that you guys would need to worry about. It's it's gonna be up to the the tenant to figure out whether or not they can fit their car in that driveway spot.
Well, it is something we have to worry about because we said the DoD permit that requires. Combination pedestrian. So, yeah, we can't make it worse.
Well, you're not approving it to have an F one fifty in the spot. You're approving it to a small compact car.
I'm I'm finding that the pedestrian experience is not detrimented by this. Actually, I tried to find that it's been improved, but I'm having a hard time doing that. At the very least.
Well, that parking spot is getting bigger than it is now. Then, not worse.
Not worse, but ain't great.
Well, I think it it doesn't occur, it's a existing spot.
But it's not. It's not an existing spot.
No, it is.
It's just an existing piece of pavement that people sometimes stuck a car on.
It's, it would be.
It needs no legitimate. Um. Definition of parking in in town. As a matter of fact, the existing thing is. Well, when it was there. It was probably like twelve people. And it was buttoned up against a door.
It's not ideal, but it it would be an improvement from what's there, which is, I think, a key parameter, you know, with a special permit. It's up to the board.
So, question of. Board, what's our options for limiting this particular scenario to just three cars?
Sure, because we've done that before.
We condition that.
We've done that before, but I mean, I, you know, how would I enforce?
Are you asking if we can?
Yeah.
Well, as I understood it. I I think we can. I think we could limit it to three cars.
You could, I mean, you could say that that would be.
That's the, that's the relief that's being asked. For five to three.
Um, but you need to to ensure that somebody doesn't just say, just doesn't come in with.
Right, that cars, yeah. Uh, there's not more than one car per dwelling.
So, so the relief would be to have a minimum. Of three?
Max.
Max.
But that's not, that's not relief. Well, it is relief. No, because we go with, we go with minimum parking. Standards, right? So we would be reducing them.
Yeah, there's a minimum parking standard required is five.
Right, and so your relief would be to three.
That's right, and you.
Now, Bill's question is, can we, can we, can we cap that at three?
Special permit.
Or the condition?
Yes.
As a condition.
Yeah, right. I guess you're right. So we'd, we'd grant relief and then we'd have a condition on them.
That's just to answer your question.
Saying that we could have a condition saying each dwelling unit. Has one car.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or, I mean, and that's where it starts to to creep into the, you know. Market of, if if he's able to get a tenant who has zero cars and get a tenant that has two, then, you know, it's just. You're not allowed more than three spots or three vehicles on the property. Uh, and if there are more than three, then that would be a violation of the special permit in even.
Can can we go to the NOI versions?
Yep, can I just add in one point if you don't mind it? So the other thing I just wanted to add in here is, again, you know, the board has been skeptical of tandem parking spots. And I understand that. It is logistical. I have other properties that have this issue and people work through it, but. Um, this snow storage zone would be paved, so for three quarters of the year. It would be available as a parking spot. Technically, I know it's not perfect and ideal. And so, you know, I just want, I guess, that consideration there. Um, again, like I am trying to avoid parking here, right, to increase pedestrian and kind of neighborly experience. Um, but, you know, that will be paved and, you know, I don't know how we consider that in 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 approval.
To be clear, what was the language that we saw? The the language would require relief from tandem parking, right? The the no tandem parking.
Yeah, there was eight, I can't read it.
It's six point one point eight point one.
I've heard there's a lot of tandem parking. It's possible. I'm not like worried about that. We've all had apartments like that.
Yeah.
Fine, great.
But.
Well, depends on if they're in the same unit or not, right?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying like, it's a thing that exists. It's not. It's, it, we re- we require relief, but like. I don't know.
I mean, if if it was limited to one vehicle per unit, then. Unit two is going to have to knock on unit three's door to. Move a car in the other plan.
Yes. But I'm just saying, like, I I know that it's not in our thing that we would require a waiver because that's so problematic, but. I don't know. I think I live with it with other units and you 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 deal with it. I'm not, I'm not personally very worried about that.
Yeah.
Like, it's a thing that you do.
And what does?
I like the pre-thriving.
I think one other just piece to add into this, um, and I didn't include any pictures of this, but, you know. On, on the side of the street away from the mills where our property is located, there's numerous other houses there. Um, all who have more, you know, more than two or three parking spots on site. And a lot of those people still park on the street. So I, you know, I also think it's like, you know, we're doing the best to provide, but. You know, it's it's going to be hard to lease it, right, uh, on the backside. It's. Um, yeah.
Looking at this project has also made me realize the uh. There's a big chunk of the street that's no parking back from when the mill was, you know, heavily used, heavily parked all the time. Not in relation to this project specifically, but it has brought to my attention that, you know, if parking is a concern on the street, that could be something that can be considered. At a future time by the select board, I suppose it would be.
Select board and U D W, select board controls some streets.
Again, this project brought it to my attention, but I'm not saying specifically for this, but I'm just saying as a whole, if it's a problem on the street.
I've thought the same thing every time I drive down that end of the street, like, why is it no parking?
Yeah.
Um, so, and it's easy to call the details, but when I look at this big picture. Um. The, the way to help with the pedestrian experience. Uh, in in the general area is to help take cars off the street. I think that can help. And I think putting pressure on a site like this. To constrain parking, I I think can impact the pedestrian experience by having more cars required to park on the street. Um, there's. How many bedrooms total? Seven?
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
So we'll get nine bedrooms. I I don't, I don't, I'm hesitant to give parking relief that only has three cars for nine bedrooms. So, from my point of view. To make, to meet the DoD criteria, I see, I see like more parking as helping that. Strictly from the DoD criteria. Well, I'm hesitant to give parking relief.
We don't allow parking in the winter, so.
Right, I'm hesitant to give parking relief to have a, to to have a minimum number of three parking spots for nine bedrooms. I I think that's, that doesn't match, that just doesn't match. You know, nine bedrooms, three parking spots doesn't match me, but. Having five parking spots for nine bedrooms can feel about, feels better, feels about right as a minimum.
The existing would be two bedrooms and five, potentially five bedro- Sorry, two units with potentially five bedrooms each. The two existing spots.
Well, the the existing is four bedrooms right now, right? Or previously before you started construction.
Before it was four.
Four bedrooms for the current condition.
Four bedrooms total?
Correct, and a finished basement. So like, I don't know whether you, like, are, when you consider.
It was two, two, two bedroom units.
So, I don't want, I'm, I don't, I'm hesitant to give parking relief. Have a minimum of three parking spaces on site.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Bill, with, I'm I'm going to. Kind of wrapping my head around this. What what view? With this guy up there? What would you see as an option for that, other than removing a car from there, a parking from there?
Exactly. Really shouldn't have a car there. There's too damn many cars that block sidewalks.
Which obviously is a problem everywhere, and we're not expecting this project to, you know, fix that whole thing. But I think the idea is that we want to set up for success, something that actually can be parked in and not block sidewalks.
Well, that was my, that was kind of what I was getting at. Are you, are you saying? Don't put a car there and make it like that's where your access is for pedestrian? Are you saying extend the parking lot or what? I, that's what I'm kind of not sure what you meant.
I'm saying the depth isn't great.
What, what are the dimensions of it now? Sixteen feet, right?
It's like sixteen feet by nine feet.
Yeah.
Right now, it's.
I mean, it's a walkway to the door, right?
Will be sixteen feet when you move the staircase. Currently, it's less than that.
Yes, so that's an improvement. Right?
It's better, that's what I was saying before, it's better.
If he goes the NOI route anyways, then. Uh, because there's an elevation issue, so he would have to do filling. Um, so he could potentially expand. That area like to be. If you're going to fill back there anyways.
Yeah. What's the width, width of that? Do you remember?
I think it's about nine feet.
Okay, which is standard, that's standard width, right?
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
Yeah, and. Just aware of that.
Up to the.
The Jason property, I guess they share the driving, so they can open the doors.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's hone this in. What's the, what's our? What's your goal for tonight? What do you, you trying, would you like? Us to close and take a vote?
I think I, dealing at this point, um, I think we know all of the options and the facts of what it is. And so. Um, really, we're either going to vote and get parking relief and have three units or vote and not get parking relief and have three units so I can go the NOI route and and do that. Um. Yeah.
So I just don't want to keep talking in circles about this stuff.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, just one question I had, because I hadn't heard about the the public access. Were you considering possibility for public access?
Oh, not public access. Sorry, just access for for the residents to. Get back to the riverfront area.
Okay.
To encourage them to sit out there.
Oh, okay, okay, my bad. Okay.
Um, okay.
That's what I missed.
I'll open it up through a public comment. Can you see if there's anyone online, Bill? Yes, sir.
Driving and.
If you could, just identify yourself for the record. And then directly.
Did you have your? Okay, I'm trying to keep my mouth shut.
Yeah, no, you're great.
First thing, I'm trying to keep out of this. Um, there are so many things.
Can you just identify?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan Presnick, Falls Hill Site Street, I live right next door to the property.
Thank you, Dan.
Um, and just at the top of the thing, I just wanted to say, um, I know Justin's been trying his best to. Keep all the pieces together. Um, I'm just not sure it's possible to really do what he's trying to do. So that's where I'm coming from. Just specifically for that spot, I park right next to that spot. The nine feet that is allowed goes over the property line. So I don't even think that is, there was nine feet for that to be wide. Uh, second of all, that that's the spot. I park literally against. The the building, like within an inch or two, so I can open my door. If you put another car there. And if it's, unless they park against the wall, there's going to be maybe one or two feet between the cars. So if they move that car over, so that a passenger can get out. So if they move that car over, so that a passenger can get out, there's gonna be no room for me to get out of my car. Number one, about that spot eh eh as well. Um, that is the uh, the person uh, who lives in the, people who live in the bottom uh uh, have to come out and go up there. There was no room with two cars there. A person might be able to squeeze through to get out. And if they're carrying groceries or something, i- it's just, there's just not enough room there for those two cars. Uh, that's the one thing. Let me go back to my, I I I just saw this presentation a couple hours ago, made some quick notes. And um, let me just say, eh eh as far as the overall project. The developer's coming in, he's not from Maynard. He's coming in to do a project to make some money, which is fine and whatever, and he's doing the best he could to to work within the thing. But everything that's come up on this project, and I got all this with statistics about this, have the negative things that are gonna be have to be borne by the local residents who live there. The parking and with all these other things that are coming in out. Um, he's gonna get the 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 benefit of of the income and the local citizens are gonna bear the the negative parts of it on a day to day basis. So that that's my way I'm coming into it. Uh, specifically about the off-street parking. You're talking about nine bedrooms. And I didn't even consider the option that one of them may be like a college kids, so be four or five people. You're talking about a huge number of extra people, you know, ten, fifteen people are gonna be living in that house. It's going to be, and even going back from the 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 four units or the three units, they're expanding the number of bedrooms. So it's actually the three bedroom, the three uh, unit thing will actually be able to house more people than the four unit. Then that's possibility. So you're talking about a huge number of additional people. That translates into cars. To talk about one or two or three cars, you talk about ten or twelve people, college students that might each have their own cars. What happens in the winter? Where did you put it? Two, three, five cars, three cars? Where do the other five or six or seven cars park on winter nights? They're not allowed to park on the street, or are they getting exemption that they can park on the street in the winter that nobody else can can get? It just, it just makes no sense. The 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 logic is not different from the numbers uh, point of view. So, I mean, you talked about a a tremendous number of people and cars, and just the numbers don't make up unless you're gonna say they don't have to deal with the winter parking problems. Um, and I mentioned about the uh, the spot being nine foot one inches. It's that goes over the property line, uh, and I literally could not get out of the car because the car would be run, and that's an average size size car. Um, and I know there are problems on the other side, but uh, I, you know, I I I don't live there. I don't know exactly what what that issue is. The real issue is that you've got three or five cars out of maybe five or ten maybe. And it's hard to to judge exactly how many cars being, but all those extra cars are gonna park out on the street, taking up on-street parking. Plus, other than the winter nights, that parking lot can be completely empty. Nobody could park back there. In fact, the people who live on the upper uh, uh, apartments, um, their interest is on the front. They're gonna have to walk from the back, walk around the thing to get into their house. They have no incentive to park in the back. So you're talking about a huge number of additional on-street parking. I've lived there for nine years. I've never had a problem being able to park. I'm a special pace. I've got disabilities. I can't walk very far. But for me to park up, the area that you talked about that was available for parking, to park there and have to walk with bags of groceries, I could not literally do it. Uh, and again, that's just me, but the other neighbors also all talk about it. This new, it's like, it's like we've got Vatican City here that has special rules for it, and all the other neighbors have to play by the old rules, and these guys uh, are looking for exemptions to not play by the rules. They can't take up all the parking eh eh on the street. It's a narrow street. And there's not a whole lot of parking uh, as eh as it is. And with all these additional cars in, it's just not fair to 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 the rest of us up on the street. Um, eh, one other minor issue, um, the uh, E L Harvey, the uh trash guys. They just put a new rule in because hillside is a one-way street. They are requiring that the trucks, the automated trucks can only pick up from one side. They're requiring everybody on the uh, north side of the street to put their recycle bins on the south side of the street. Well, if you've got all these extra cars taking up space on on the thing and and whatever, there's just not gonna be any room to put those blue containers out there. And and again, it's it's once every two weeks, maybe it's not a big deal. But it's just another little thing. It's it's just a negative for the for the residents. And, you know, we get nothing out of it. All they do is we get the problems and the issues and and whatever. And so it's just so much of stuff that's going on, it just doesn't make any logical sense. I know you guys have your your board thinking and you have rules, you have to do it. I'm just a a person thinking about how my day is gonna go, uh, you know, whatever. Um, but if I can't park reasonably in front of my house and get my groceries in, I gotta move. I gotta, you're throwing me out of my my apartment because uh, uh, it just, it's just impossible for me to live. Um, and like I said, we're taking all the negatives and he's making money off the deal, which is fine, but okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Presnick. Is there anybody online, Bill?
Uh, no.
Okay, so nobody online, no other public comments?
No.
Um, we can, we have options. We can um, we can close the hearing and take a vote. Or we can close the hearing for sure, or we can, um, is there, usually, if, the only reason I would keep hearings open is if there's additional information that may be necessary to gain. Right? Uh, I I I don't see much additional information that can be provided at this time. Am I missing something?
No, I just had a question that I wanna ask before I, I don't wanna interrupt you.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. I'm all right.
No, that's it. I'm just, so I'm trying to see if there's additional information that we need to obtain before we close the hearing, because that's the point.
Well, I I'd like to, I just have one question on back to my, oh, back to the uh.
You just have to shoot.
I'd sort of like to know which direction we're going.
Um. Mr. President, you're over here, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just to the top of that, right, right next to that car right there.
And this configuration requires, this is really four, if you had five, you're you're still be having some problems. I'm just wondering if this, if this is uh, in play for, if we're gonna, if you were gonna go against first.
Am I gonna comment to your question?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, you could uh, put another spot here during where the snow storage zone is. If we were able to extend a snow storage zone here that was impervious. Um, but I know that there was a requirement for ten feet off the lot line for for parking. So if that was to be named a snow storage zone that we could encroach on that ten feet, we could directly put a car here. It would be the same relief that we're asking for. It would just be two sets of tandem.
No, the board can't, the the sport can't grant that on for, um.
Well, if it's not parking, if it's snow storage.
Right, I said, but but they could create a snow storage, right?
I think we can. I think that's a parking requirement.
Maybe, huh?
That's the ten-foot parking, I think is in the parking section.
Oh, is it? It's not a, uh?
It's it's not a dimensional table thing.
Uh, I think it is. Well, if that's the case, then it could, yeah.
Does the snow storage have to be on a paved area or as long as it eventually drains through the rain garden? What what is the difference?
So, that's the tough part. Ideally, it would be on a paved area, so that way you don't get any infiltration of the salts. Um, so that's, that's kind of the idea is that we're trying to capture that salt, um. So it stays on site, um, even if when we're gonna say that he's not allowed to use salt on site, um. But what he ends up getting is a significant amount of of ground off from the street, um, which uses a lot of salt, so it's that's why it's ideal, um, so that way it goes through the rain garden, that rain garden captures all of the salt before it actually infiltrates the groundwater. Um, or the, or keeps going down into the river. Um, it could be easily, you know, it just needs to be impervious, so that could be like a dust um, stone dust pad, you know, something that so it's clear that like that's not parking, um, as long as it's you know, trying to just not allow for, you don't want to encourage infiltration on of for snow storage.
Um, so, i- is there any information the board needs, any further questions or comments?
I'll ask another question or my.
Um, I'm turning to the board right now.
Alright.
Thank you. Uh, again, my opinion is that granting parking relief, uh, would and I don't mean that, I mean this objectively detrimental would be my word. I don't mean it as a bad, but in, um, in terms of the zoning regulations, I would look at it as a, as a, as detrimental to, um, to add, to grant parking relief for a minimum for for the for three parking spots for this project. Um, I think five is an a- an absolute minimum. Uh, so it's just so you you asked where this is headed?
Yeah.
That's just my perspective.
Well, how are we gonna pick what we're?
Um, well, then the advocate would need to have a minimum of five parking spots, and he has shown, you know, one general example here.
Yep. Uh, Bill's right in the, um, uh, it it says, uh, it's the parking space of paved surface, other than an access driveway or walkway, shall be located within twenty feet of the lot line or within ten feet of any other lot line. So, um.
Twenty, twenty feet of the front.
Your front, the front?
Yeah.
But but ten feet of the side, so the snow storage would be.
So it doesn't have to be that you could do a stone dust pad, so as long as it's something impervious.
If it was a stone dust pad, that would satisfy the needs of
Conservation.
Conservation's definition of snow storage.
Then
But.
You're gonna add another, you're adding more impervious surface to an area that we won't, that's why, you know, the conservation gets the, uh. Yeah, that's uh, my recommendation would be for you guys to to vote on on the review, uh, closing during vote on the review first and then.
On on this thing, the exit from the ground floor unit or basement unit, why is there so much hardscape there?
That's an existing hardscape.
A patio or something?
It would remain?
It was an old slab, um, there was like a shed and something there.
And that is what the new deck will be over.
No. No, that would be the side entrance, so an existing slab that's there. We would just leave that and use that for the rest of it.
You have a picture there?
Um.
And you?
What would you like?
All right, well, if you don't have it handed over.
I I do have one on my computer somewhere. Um, actually, let me, let me see if I can pull it up real quick.
Uh, water, yes.
What are you trying to, you know?
I was trying to see if I could hold up.
Don't worry about it, Phil. Nah, don't show it to the individual. You have to show it to everybody. It's a hearing.
Um, and yeah, and we would need to, we need to bring it up on the um, the recorded version.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Uh, well, if you want, I think I can.
So ideally, um, you have the, the, you join the, the view call and
Yeah, if you want to join.
But it's it's up to the board, I'm not.
You want that? I guess put it on?
No.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
No.
Um, it's not information pertinent right now.
So.
So the look, um, do we have a staff report on this bill?
No.
Okay, so, um, my inclination would be to uh, have the staff report handy. So I'd like to continue um, with with the goal of having a um, a staff report ready to review, and then we close the hearing on for the first hearing in in December. Um,
but the thing is with the staff report, I mean, is like, until I know what the board wants, it's uh, I I think what would be, do if you were willing to take a vote on the waivers, I think that
Well, we would need to close the hearing to do that.
No.
No.
Okay. I I you know.
You can, but you don't, you don't have to.
Okay.
You can deliberate in here.
So the request is parking relief and multifamily.
The, yes.
Right.
But you, but thank her. You know, you don't wanna vote on the multifamily. Yeah.
We'd have to close there for that.
Yeah, you could, you would just be the request right now. It's just a review.
Yeah.
But five spaces is not relief, but three is.
So.
Correct, and four and a half.
Yeah.
Yes, required.
Okay.
And if you do four and a half, then I can draw it up with
So it's either a yes or a no. You're allowing early for it.
Yeah, I mean.
So that that provides certainty on on how to finalize this.
That's what you're expecting. I mean, we're going on.
Vote on relief would help because then we can, like you said, get to it. Kind of more certain.
There were down to two options at that point.
Okay, fine.
Um, and then I would like to continue. Um.
To the ten?
That first.
Is that?
First meeting in December.
Yeah, we just have Coolidge on and out, um.
And the goal there would be to have a staff report and then, um, that unless there's any other information the board is 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 requesting.
Would you keep the hearing open or you close it tonight?
May I ask you for a staff report or or a draft decision?
Me, we, Bill usually provides a staff report on on D O D public hearings. They just rec- what the recommendation is. Um, what what the vote is, and then we could have, we could have draft conditions on that too.
It's basically, I can drop it up, so it's one of the same, basically.
Yeah, this is the heading change, if if that's what the board wants.
Is there an option that under consideration that has five cars in the rear and one on the side? I know who's being talked about and move the snow storage and stuff. I mean, is that a real thing or is?
I would just, I would prefer to see five cars in the back.
So if you don't, if you don't give relief, then you can, you can reconfigure the parking, um.
That's the thing is if, like, if we don't give relief.
That means that you're requiring five spots.
Right.
And you can decide where those five spots are.
But like, that that's, is that why we're gonna continue it? So then there can be more like because we, if if we, if we voted now, then we couldn't approve. We have to approve this, which is right in front of us?
Yep, so that, so it would be you, no, so you you could decide where those five spots are. So if you want to have all five in the back, or you can have the the one on the side.
We could condition it.
Be conditioned at any way you would like.
Saying we want five spots in the back to be approved by whatever.
Yeah.
Are you, are you saying? Uh, what about this spot? Are you saying don't?
Well, it sounds like there may not even be enough room there for an actual spot. We don't know. I mean, there's no dimensions, right? Like, we don't really know.
You know, the difficult thing about the existing conditions is is, you know, you, you can improve the existing conditions, potentially if you have, if he's able to get relief of the, of the spot. So you can say you're granting relief as long as you build that spot out.
My my point is though, we don't even know how big that, the potential for that spot is. Could it even fit a vehicle, honestly?
Well, there's vehicles now.
It's an existing spot, so.
Well, I don't have a vehicle in it now, and I think that's part of the thing is like, there hasn't been vehicles parked on this property in a long time.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, I'm happy to do that. My only concern also is just uh, I'm happy to move this spot and take the snow storage zone. My only concern is if I get them to conservation and there's an issue of adding more impervious surface for the snow storage that like ends up being a detriment because I'm, right, like, I don't want to bounce between like mords here and like, um.
Well, that's the the area where the Well, that's the the area where the the problem car is could be turned into an impervious.
Perfect, yeah, we would, we would probably recommend that.
But it would still need to be a walkway, right?
No, there's no door there.
No, access to that side unit is gonna, you have to go all the way around the back.
Like a ten foot trial. Oh, on the front bumper of that car.
How did you even arrive at the size of the snow storage? Was there any thought put into that or did you just? Like. You know, is it a X inch storm over that in my area fits into that spot or? Is there a world where five spots could fit back there with snow storage on the pavement? Or was that just showing as snow storage because it's?
They'll have to do the calculations, I think, it's the NOI.
I mean, if we have continued warm winters like we've had, like we haven't had a storm since like probably twenty fifteen, that's. Seven or winter with like seven or eight feet of snow, then. And like snow storage is probably not even a issue.
Totally agree, we just, the rigs are.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Uh I would, my preference would be five part parking spots in the back.
With the rain garden.
I think that is a stronger application that shows that we're trying to provide. A better um experience for. Pedestrian and neighbors. Um I think it helps match that gets, I think that better. Um. Beats the criteria for the DOD. Um. And yes, so that's it.
So did you call for a vote on relief?
We have not called for a vote on relief.
Yeah, no, I see.
Oh, we could, yeah. Um. So yes, I um if anyone disagrees, I'm fine to take a vote on on the relief question, since that's been put in front of us. Okay, I'll make a motion to uh approve the. The request for relief and just so we're clear, motions have to be in the affirmative.
Correct.
Um so we can't take a motion to deny, so I've already made it clear that I don't support it, but my motion is to.
That's correct.
Approve the relief.
Perfect, okay.
Well, like relief is. Three more spaces.
Relief to three spaces and that's the request.
With no design attached to it.
It's just um uh it's just a question about relief.
Yeah.
So I would need a second.
Second.
All in favor to support the relief to three parking spots, please raise your hand. And. One, all all and all, all all those opposing the the uh motion, please raise your hand. You know, you know that, okay, so. Uh one to three is the. The motion does not pass, relief has not been granted.
That's correct, because this is, that's not a public hearing, right, okay. So. Uh yeah, correct, so that that's.
Um so I would. Again, I just wanted to see this carved out um with the with the draft decision and staff report, call it what you want. Um. Because.
Are you asking him to come back to you with a a design without that car on the side? That what you would like him to?
I think that would be beneficial, um and that's what I think would be the strongest application here. Would have to have not a car shown as a parking spot on the side. Um and then. Um. To to not restrict the site design too much, I think conditioning this is 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 a more appropriate way to go. So that's why I'm I'm thinking, Bill, it's just be good to have those conditions kind of written out so the board can see them. Before we close the board.
You just said. Close and vote on the multifamily.
Multifamily.
Before you close your hearing.
But. Is it fair to say that? Requiring parking relief implies that. We are considering multifamily. I mean, not allowing, not, sorry, not. Voting for parking relief implies that we are considering multifamily.
Well, now you just have one question.
Yes.
That you're next, you're you will close up the hearing and then vote on, yeah.
I don't think the vote implies anything. I just think my my vote, the way I voted was that I think parking relief would be, could be detrimental. So.
Hey.
What's up? Okay.
So what would best thing to do, if we're gonna continue this, then to the ten. If you get me a revised plan for the box of board ones that I can draft up and then we can ensure that there's. Parking in the back, ample parking, because whether it's two units, which you can do by right, or three units, you're gonna have parking.
That's exactly right.
Right, and and so the question is, how do you minimize the potential for vehicles ending up on the street?
Mm-hmm.
Now, you drive down there, whether people are out there or not, it may be, you don't want to exacerbate it and that's unknown. But I think that would be my understanding, what you want to draft up, the rain garden. Does improve runoff heading to the ass of it, which is a critical concern as well with that. Um. I can do that.
Good.
But just, you get, I just need the sooner rather than later, so I can work on it, cause I can't.
I mean, I basically have have it done, I just need to adjust.
And and we, the board isn't asking for any further presentation, um like we, I think we have the information we need, I just want this tidy.
Yep, that's all, that makes sense, okay.
I I do have one question. Can the the later action clarify whether there's access from the. Street level units directly. To the back and the porch, it used to be in some version, and I can seem to show it.
Whenever I was.
It used to be stairs that went down, but I don't see.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be open to any other, if there's any other. Things that someone might point out they wanna see, I I'm happy to do that.
I just wanna be able to understand what's happening, if it's part of it or not.
Okay.
I just have a question. So where the edge of the pavement is right now between the the rain garden and the and the pavement?
Yeah.
Is that based on a buffer zone that? You don't know if that's the actual line yet because you don't have it flagged.
Correct.
So that line could go five feet either way. Depending on.
Yeah, so.
So if it goes.
Because of the drought. Yeah, flagging is gonna be interesting, uh the buffer zones will change, I mean, regardless, that's not gonna change whether or not the the two hundred foot buffer zones in the street. So he has to come before conservation no matter what, um and and submit no underlying, so whether or not that that buffer zone, the one hundred foot is. Is um you know, ten feet over or ten feet back, it's it's really not gonna change his parking process. Uh but we will need to to submit um getting that flag, which will be.
The one hundred foot buffer doesn't have anything to do with a allowed pervious or impervious area at all, that's just. Kind of what's depicted.
Yeah, so the two hundred foot buffer is the reason why he triggers conservation. Which is off the, it's actually probably right where the hillside street is.
Yeah.
Uh so if that's plus or minus ten feet, then it doesn't matter, the project's gonna still be in the zone um.
So if that hundred foot moves, you could have parking on the other side of the one hundred in that one.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna change anything. Um it it's just whether or not, you know, if this wasn't the asset river, it was just a wetland, then obviously that would be a very important line. Cause that's whether or not he's in jurisdiction or outside of jurisdiction, but it's um. Yeah, they'll have to have to decide that and you could also, you know, you could condition. That to be pending um. You know. That that conservation could potentially move the area of of paved area like over or subtract or. Add five feet if, so that way he wouldn't have to come back to you with a with another plan, you can't necessarily talk about the one hundred foot buffer zone. Um in planning, but you can, you can give some leeway to the plan to allow for conservation to to do what they need to do.
We don't make decisions based on the one hundred foot buffer zone is what you mean.
And we can talk about it.
You can, yeah, you can't like refer to it in a decision.
Um well, good, yes, okay, um I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to December tenth at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor of the continuance, please raise your hand. Four zero per continuance, good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you, Julia.
Done, good.
Dan, thanks for coming in.
Do we have anything else?
Yeah.
Do we have anything P M O D?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about P M O D.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna take over.
I'm designating vice chair. Bye, guys.
When we talk about, is that on the agenda?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Um.
Secrets.
P M O D. Day twenty, okay. Um Phil and I have been, oh man, I know it's crazy. Phil Crenshaw and I have been working on.
Oh Natalie, for the record, or you should just probably just say that you're. Taking over as chair.
I'm vice chair Natalie Robert and I'm taking over because Chris had to leave.
Perfect.
And our P M O D update involves the affordable housing section of the P M O D language. The parking section of the P M O D language.
Right.
The.
Parking section?
Yep. No, what?
Oh, I think yes.
Yes, yes, parking and then uh we need to talk about special permits a little bit.
Okay.
When they kick in and when they don't.
Alright.
You wanna start, you wanna start with special permits?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Oh, special permits, special permits are hard, I want to.
Okay, start, start with your easy stuff then.
Okay, so just as a reminder. The board. We're looking at P M O D districts B and E.
D and C.
D and E.
D and B and uh.
We already did A, A has gone through town meeting and been approved, so A's done. C and B are residential and they're. Should be taken care of at some other future times, but right now we're just talking about. D and E, which are currently his own business and. This thing I handed out is the M I P C summary of what was supposed to happen there, the smaller scale mixed use development, first of all, retail, et cetera. Um. Now, there's a couple. Sections that. Is in the proposed. Or is in the existing language for P M O. For uh sub district A. And. We've been kicking around some potential modifications to that, so we pass that stuff over. And none of this we have to. Do anything with, but this is just initial thoughts and just looking for big picture feedback on this stuff. Um. What you've been handed is two pages, uh on the first page, it. It says, it shows what is currently in the new zoning language. For the P M O D and it was written to cover first um section A, but at the moment, it's written, so it applies everywhere. And.
And that would say the same for A, because we're not changing anything there.
So, well, one of the options is, well, unfortunately, the language is a little awkward, but. The suggestion here is the second table where this table would apply. To A, to B, and to E, but critically, it would not make. The requirements for A any more restrictive than it is now. Because we don't wanna screw with the M B T A zoning that we've got approved for A. So currently, it says one space per dwelling unit and the proposed change would also be one space per dwelling unit. So we're not making it any more restrictive regarding M B T A free aid zoning. Uh and then you have on the second page, basically the table that applies to everywhere in town. And. The proposed language. Uh the uh table X on the first page, it really uses that number as a maximum allowed. And then. Um in order to. Provide incentives for redeveloping the the, it lowers the minimum. Now, of course. We have the ability to waive all our parking stuff anyways, so, you know, this, these numbers could change during during the hearing, but the point is. To reduce the parking requirements um that. People would see and also to simplify the apartment requirements. So that, you know, the minimum number for medical office and office and wrestling retail are all the same, so if there was like the simple kind of use. We wouldn't have to worry about more party, so.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
So that's what this is on the parking one. Um. Any big picture thoughts on that?
So.
Jump out at you as, you know, that's good or that's bad.
So the, what you're saying is they could ask for. They could propose less parking without asking for relief. Based on the minimum.
Correct. And if they even wanted less than that, they could then ask for relief.
Yeah.
But so so nine seven one is existing now because of P M O D A.
Corrected, theoretically, the way it's written, it applies everywhere for all some restaurants, the way it's written now.
Okay.
So that might need to be changed.
But as you said, we're not making it any more restrictive, we're making it less restrictive.
Right.
And that's both to keep in line with A, which we have to keep, you know, not restricted.
That's right.
Also as an incentive for a business firm developer to say. Hey, I'm gonna use this overlay district because it says that instead of the underlying district requirement of. The one, you know, two per three bedroom in a multifamily. Well, I guess that doesn't, that's what it was before, but you know what I'm saying, it's it's less parking required.
Right, right, it's it's. And then.
And that's the truth for all.
And hopefully, we won't have applicants come in with two different plans, based on the target.
And and the idea is that with the other uses, because we're making them consistent with each other, it prepares you ahead of time. For a potential change of use, which can be your can of worms here, if we don't, yeah.
Which changes of use, sometimes we should look at, but not, not for these.
Yeah, when, yeah, right.
Right.
I think it's cool.
And and the other thing I I like about this is. You know, these areas, if they have parking problems. It's self-contained, it doesn't really have too much ability to spill over. Or if you.
Well, that's true too, that's true too, yeah.
But that's that's. We have to do something, I mean, we could just leave the existing language and apply it throughout the entire. P M O D to all the sub districts, but. It just seems like, you know. It could have even less parking in them, so they, you were times they'd have to ask for permission.
I have a couple of questions, like for office, right, we, it used to, it currently says one space per five hundred, right? And then we're gonna go to two per a thousand, which is.
Same.
The same, but if it was a. Five hundred square foot place, or they still need the minimum of two? No, is that how that would work?
No, no, you apply the ratio, so they got five hundred, they it would be one.
Okay, cause some of the stuff in here, uh like I'm just getting my feet wet, so I'm trying to understand, but like some of our rules say, like we have to round it up to the next full number, right?
Uh we do, so if they had five hundred and ten square feet.
Right.
They'd have to go to two.
But if they had four ninety, they could go to one.
They can go to one, yeah.
So just curious, what's the benefit of changing it from one per five to two per thousand?
Oh, that's totally me.
That's just building.
I like it, I like it per thousand.
Most people think per thousand, cause you're like, oh, I'm building. You know.
Yeah, no, it's it's fine, I'm just curious why the, what the benefit of the change, I'm trying to understand.
No, that that is hmm, oh, personal preference, although that's the majority of people.
Bill billing, alright.
But yeah, people, you you can see it in zoning, you know, they'll, in one place, they'll reference one space per five hundred and then, you know, when no. Another place, they'll just. round it to a thousand.
Well, and like, they exist in one with one space per eighty-five square feet, and for a restaurant, it's like, okay, where are we?
Yeah.
Or planning board, not engineers.
Yeah.
Um, and and then, I'm sorry, what was the benefit of the, of creating a maximum?
Ooh, I was hoping you were gonna ask that.
Alright, go for it.
No.
You're hoping it would be asked, so you could answer it?
That's the exciting part about this table.
Um, it it did come up in the original efforts from MIPC. Um, it didn't make it to the final cut, but I think there's some value in that, you know, if somebody wants a whole lot of parking, then they need to talk to us about it.
Okay.
Because, and frankly, these numbers here that are maximum are what? Nine out of ten times, people want less than that. It's like, hey, they're built.
And the other thing is they can't ask for waiver for the maximum.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if they come and they say, I'm building an event hall, and I do need a million parking spaces, then tell us about it.
They make the case, and.
It almost, you know, that that benefits what's gonna happen on the Concom side of riverfront type stuff, impervious areas, and it's gonna fit more in what's possible in that area beyond just our group, beyond just planning board, it's kinda good.
Yes. Trying to write language about instances from the river's edge impervious surfaces is proving tricky, considering the river has a malleable edge. So, language like this built it in.
Well, you know, one thing we should do, if we're gonna change this, we should put the the use I was talking about last week, particularly out here, the uh experience, like we should have it a a um a new category.
Oh, yes, your experience category. Yeah, for, yeah, for sure.
This would be exactly what you want to have.
Put in experience, I forgot to tell Bill about that, we never.
We we do not need that, at the PMOD.
Experience, experience.
If that would not be specific to the PMOD, that's townwide, so if you wanna add a townwide, go ahead.
No, townwide.
And it would become under other uses not noted here.
Is that like an escape room?
Yes.
I just did one for the first time.
How was it?
It was good.
How much parking did they need?
Yes, I think we should add experience to our.
Yeah.
But that has nothing to do with an overlay.
Well.
The overlay can reference it, but unless you're saying experience can only happen in the overlay, that's not.
But it needs to exist before it can be referenced.
Put it in our use table, though.
Yeah, no, Bill's right, I got, I got where you're, you're right.
But then it would have to be defined and.
I know.
I know, we could, yeah, but then you're saying it all can only happen here, and it can't happen, you know. Well, yeah, alright, so the uh the other thing.
Wait, is there anything else?
I don't wanna hear it.
No, I I like the idea of the minimums.
Maximal.
They're just trying to make it easier for people, and I guess you're right, the maximum kind of sets a little line for, you know, okay, maybe you need to go talk to us, because you have two things, two things.
Let let me ask on the maximum, so the minimums are well-established through whatever, we've come to learn that these numbers work for these sizes of spaces.
Yep.
Where did the maximum numbers come from?
That's basically our existing minimums. But if you look at the table on the next page, that's basically what those are. But over the years, the minimums have more often than not been waived because nobody wants to put in that new standard. Because things could change from there.
You guys think like this is the, this is talking about DNA.
Yeah.
Is it?
Okay.
Well, I know, but we're not gonna talk.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just thinking terms, I'm just trying to plan for fall, I mean, for uh spring.
Yeah.
Do we see this happening by by spring, you think?
Well.
What's our timeline for spring town meeting?
There's always putting it together, basically, we don't have the date yet for town meeting.
Okay.
But we know more a lot.
Christmas? That's very soon.
Yeah, we gotta get to it. We gotta do it.
It'll be tough, but I mean, we'd, we'd oh, but, I mean, we have to basically rewrite the language we passed um for A.
Say again?
We have to rewrite the all of the zoning section that we wrote for A.
Why do we have to do that?
Because that is the PMOD of which A is a piece. And then you were gonna add other sub districts.
So can't we just come up with new language for the other stuff?
Yeah, I think so, we, I thought we made it literally flexible, so we didn't have to do that.
That all got written. Because there are sections here, like the parking section just says this applies to the PMOD. Done. All sub district. Most of it, most of that language says all this stuff applies everywhere. The only thing that text is set up really is uses to be different by district. But it's not that big a deal. I mean, most of it, I mean, there's, there's only only half a dozen changes, it's just most of it is restructuring the the language of the of the section. But we we couldn't take anything away from the MBTA.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm, I'm just.
Like if we require a special permit somewhere, we keep, we have to um exclude.
A.
And we, well, maybe we exclude A, or we just exclude multifamily over seventeen per acre in there.
Yeah, yeah, we have to be very careful with that.
Yeah, so we gotta be a little careful of that, but yeah, these are not standalone things, these are woven into that language that we passed. And example of that would be affordable housing.
Wait, but real quick.
Wow, we were not supposed to start with parking this long.
Why, not that important, the parts also.
Right, which is funny, because this is like, since I've been on the planning board, that's all we talked about. I just, I just think about the times.
Right.
An optional parking is just leave it the way that it in the new language, and almost numbers apply everywhere, and we just ignored, we did you know, massive waiver request.
But we have waivers, so, yeah, we can do that, of course.
That that's always an optional part, because we can waive anything.
And we can just hold this in our brains, that's what we think it should be.
Yeah, so that's all, that's always a choice.
I like that, I like the part.
But affordable housing, you don't have that option, you have to change.
We have to what?
You have to change.
We we're gonna exclude PMODA?
Well, we have to recognize two separate um thresholds. So. So this is affordable housing, and we have affordable housing is covered townwide by inclusionary zoning.
Thank you.
Um, but our language for the PMOD since inclusionary zoning numbers were too strict for the MBTA compliance, we had to
Right.
put in a special thing for zone A.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we're too good at it.
And and that's the text that's on the top of the first page, it started out, that's what we have in that zoning. And we talked about it, and it's like, okay, in A, it has to be, you know, whatever the housing office says we can do, or twenty percent, whatever. So we, so right now in A, we have actually no, the way it's written, this applies everywhere in the PMOD. All sub districts. So we could just leave this for all sub districts, but that means that we would have to, every time they came in, we'd have to ask the housing office what the allowable number is. And I don't really wanna do that in B and C and D and E.
No, why would we have to do that?
So, so the proposal here is the proposed text in that first paragraph, nine seven six one, that's in A, we do this, and it's exactly the same as we said in the existing text, but and then nine seven six two says, in D and E, we're gonna do this. Now, the important thing here is this proposal says in D and E, we're gonna do different than the townwide inclusionary zoning. And the objective here is one, to make it more attractive, to get housing built here, but the other is to encourage lesser priced affordable housing. The affordable housing, you know, the standard definition is eighty percent of the area median income, which is, you know, a hundred K plus.
Yeah, yeah.
In the Boston area. And so here, it's offering trades like, well, you know, where it says two units at eighty percent, you could just do one unit at sixty percent. And then more people, you know, a different type of person could afford to live there. And um so that's the thought of D and E. Not trying to make greater numbers of eighty percent units, but trying to make greater numbers of sixty percent units.
But if we do that, okay, so the the nine point seven point six point one in the proposed.
Yes.
Looks like the same, is it the same that was stricken above?
Yes.
That's the same line.
It's a survey.
Okay, so that's the, so that really isn't really stricken, that's just reading up, right?
Sure.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why do we have to eliminate, okay, if we get, if we go to D and E, why, why do we have to um get rid of density bonus provisions? How are we gonna make the, what what's the incentive?
Very awkward, and we've never actually used them, I don't believe. They're not the density bonus you're thinking of. They're the inclusionary zoning density bonus, they're not the PMOD density bonus.
It is awkward.
Probably are.
But 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 why what's the incentive for the per, how are we making the incentive for the developer to create these sixty percent AMIs?
There, there's fewer required affordable units. And fewer still if they're at sixty percent.
So each sixty percent one counts as two of the required number. Which means we have fewer units, but the units that we have are gonna be at sixty percent AMI instead of eighty percent AMI.
But if a developer is coming in, and they, let's say, buy right, they can build whatever, and okay, we want them to create sixty percent AMI units. Right?
Yes.
If they could, we're not just saying, okay, you you can build what you, what you have by right, and you're going to be required to build these, this number of affordable in a different scale, not our inclusionary zoning, but you don't get a density bonus, you're not creating additional units, how would we, how, what would be the incentive, or maybe I'm missing it?
No, the, well, the incentive is more, it it's gonna be I think for six to ten, it's not really gonna be relevant, right?
No.
But for eleven to twenty, if someone coming in saying, I'm gonna build fifteen units, and we say, okay, then two of them have to be affordable, eighty percent AMI. Or fourteen percent, fourteen of them can be market rate, and one can be sixty percent AMI. Right?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a
Worth it to them.
That's worth it to them, because they get fourteen units at market rate instead of thirteen.
So you're saying, but and that we will keep proportionate either of the ten percent?
We don't have to. We'll already be there.
No, but if we create well, alright, one thing in a crap, I guess, so I mean, I want to do this.
It's the small stuff, because I mean, you know, once we get twenty-one, we'll be, you know, that's fifty-five percent required and.
I I don't know if that's what you're saying, but would that not potentially hurt us in the long run with things like
BSHI?
The forty B?
Yeah, the.
Because we're only gonna be getting one unit instead of
It will, but that's why.
What matters for the forty B stuff.
It will, that's why this is such a confined space, this is not townwide, this is not a new inclusionary zoning by law, this is for the specific space to try and test, right, try and no one's ever gonna build sixty percent AMI units. No one is, no one's ever gonna choose to, if the state has no language pushing it, and if we have no language pushing it. This is it.
I agree. I don't disagree with you, my only thing is that, okay, let's just say we're ten percent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And someone.
I I my fear is all of a sudden, you know, I, we, I, everything we do, I would wanna create ten percent, because we are creating two, or three, four bedrooms, or a unit that are not adding any affordable, so how do we keep from dropping proportionally? You know, that's, that's my I I slaughtered that sense, but you know.
No, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I wouldn't worry about it too much, because this is a small defined area, and big projects still have to do twenty-five percent. And even if they converted all at twenty-five percent into sixty percent, it's still twelve and a half.
Well, that's true.
So, you know, yeah, sure, somebody comes in and pops in a dozen units, it's like, oh, well, we slipped point zero one on our SHI, but you know, somebody comes in and puts in forty, and it's, we're fine.
Based on the size of the parcels in D and E.
Yeah.
What? What size projects could they support?
Exactly, they really can't support much of anything unless they combine parcels.
Yeah, I forget, yeah, no, I did forget, yeah, this is just D and E too, yeah.
This is just D and E.
I mean, you got big D, you got, you got the um the land, the landslide D, which is the um self-storage area.
Yeah.
You know, you could do all sorts of stuff, but you know, somebody could come and drop two hundred fifty units there. But, you know, that's all, well, over ten percent, affordable to be done.
That's, alright, I I see, I guess I wasn't I wasn't looking at it from, I I got carried away with.
No, because, no, because the SHI is something that we definitely have to keep in mind townwide, but the idea is like, again, nobody's
Well, it it townwide, we we have to do it because of state.
I know.
The mandate, for the realities of serving the public.
That's what I mean.
We need sixty percent.
Right.
And is six, and is there another way to skin the cat, but I don't, it, you know, I was going back to my square footage. Should we do it like that, but I think, you know, this is a confined area, and it probably I think that I I could see your point.
Well, this is the problem with the SHI having no finesse.
Are you a what?
No finesse, no, like, you know, they're not paying attention to the quality of the units, they're only paying attention to the it's frustrating.
No, but we are too, in a way, because we're, we're still trying to regulate, we're saying, okay, we're going by unit size. Right? Which gives you it's easy to carve your numbers out, because you have a number to divide from. I just keep the, I keep going back, and I don't have the answer now, so I guess, you know, I can't go too far, but I just.
I mean, if you're scared about the ten percent, what you can do is leave the numbers alone for six to twenty. And just do the sixty percent trade when it's more than twenty. Because you'll always stay above ten percent.
Yeah, you'll always be twelve, twelve and a half, even if they do all of the, if they translate them all to.
You mean, just leave six and ten? Don't do the.
Twenty.
Yeah, six, yeah, six through twenty could just stay at whatever it is, which is ten and twelve percent.
And say for twenty-one or more dwelling units, the number of affordable units may be reduced by providing units affordable sixty percent AMI.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's the, if it's what D and E are trying to be, which is just, you know, first floor retail and, and, you know.
A dozen units above.
Dozen units above, well, you know, they got, they have to put in one point three affordable units.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
I mean, looking at the logistics of if D and E actually have space for twenty-one or more units, it's part of it. And if people combine parcels, they might, like, you know.
You have the Alps, you know, and, or that, I don't know. Give a number there, so, I mean, if you if you're worried about the ten percent, which well, you know, we shouldn't be, I mean, the.
Maybe not, but but it really, it's, you know. It. I'm worried about both.
Now, the other thing to worry about. Is. Whether we can. Tweak A. And. Well, I guess, no, I guess we have to do it, we have to keep the numbers.
I haven't even gotten A approved by the housing, yeah, uh, yeah, HLC.
Yeah, cause we know what those numbers are supposed to be. All right, but yet they haven't signed off on that. Economic report.
Oh, no, they signed up an A. I mean, that wasn't, they, they, they just haven't approved, they're just way behind now.
Okay. I mean, we just. Yeah, A has to be whatever. Housing. Office.
I mean.
We're stuck with that, but we can play with the others, so.
Yeah, all right, I think that's, I agree with both, and, and I think, I just, like I said, that was my only apprehension. And I go, I might, forget, I keep going back to it, forget. Actually, you know. Just for, for Jeff and Chris, the, the thing that I was always toying around and I never really got. Too far, but we regulate. Commercial by square footage, right? We regulate residential typically by. Unit. So if we're trying to create sixty percent AMI units, is there a way? To. Use square footage numbers and coverage rather than unit number to create smaller units. That presumably will be more affordable.
We don't want that.
No?
What we really want is sixty percent three bedrooms. That's what we really need.
Well, not for seniors. And that's why I was thinking senior overlay district. Seaters don't want three bedrooms. Right? They're gonna want a six hundred square.
We're here about seniors.
Wait a minute.
I don't understand that.
A different way of looking at it.
Yeah, but I don't see how that has to do with the PMOD, that's just.
It, 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 it's just something we're gonna, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cloud it, it's something.
Just do some brain exercise and see if there's a different way to think about it.
I mean, we already got ADUs coming in, so.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, that's true too, we got ADUs.
Yeah, except the state government or affordability requirement for ADUs.
Yeah, so hopefully they.
What are ADUs?
Accessory dwellers.
Oh, good.
My tiny house. Right back.
Your garage.
It's actually the basement of fourteen Hillside.
That's good work.
So, I mean, that's a couple of thoughts on that, it's just, you know, that's an example of, you know, we gotta change the language somehow. Cause we don't want the. District A rules to apply.
No.
All the other districts.
No, but I thought we did that, so it did, and we could deliberately. But maybe we did, all right, I, 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 I hear you.
Well, maybe we can still break it up, so we're not striking anything and we're just adding.
Right, and so that gets over now to the special permit thing, which is another thing. Affected by the language. Um, the way it was written. Oriented towards A. Cause right now, the language. Unless it's a certain use, the language does not require a special permit anywhere in any district, well. Um. Unless it's a, it's a specific use, but just because you choose to use the PMOD. Zoning does not. As currently written, require automatic special permit.
That's correct.
It requires automatic site plan.
Site plans, right.
But it doesn't require.
That's right. And, and your question is, now, we deliberately needed that A, but you're saying.
We had.
Right, but you're saying, do we want it in the other districts?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Some version of it or.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure, we do, but. You know, I think that's where we expected to change is that too.
Yeah, we think there'd be some.
I mean. I don't know, is it?
So currently.
Look, is a mixed use, well, we got a mixed use project in here right now, okay, in the DOD.
Yeah.
Comes in here, right? Okay, we would say. We, we would eventually say, what's the use? You know, what, what's going in, what kind of mix of uses, but the mixed use is coming in. Under special permit, right? Is it? Yeah, sure. If it's over six units. Or is.
No, if it's under, but the point is.
No, I'm saying now in our DOD.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
In the DOD, okay, so we would say, all right, we're gonna, you're gonna have a special permit. For, let's say, seven unit mixed use.
Yep.
Okay, and you're gonna have a bagel shop on the bottom, Billy's, Billy's Bagels. You wouldn't say, is the bagel shop part of this, we need a special permit for bagel, right, we would say it's a mixed use. And we're permitting it as a mixed use.
Correct.
And it's gotta have, whatever our percentages we did, remember that, we did those percentages a couple of years ago? And we don't care, we didn't, we never said, it's, you can't be an insurance salesman, or you can't be.
Right.
It's, we said the space has to be. Dedicated, so I would think that would be what we wanna maximize, stuff like that, in the areas where you envision mixed uses as likely.
As far as permitting says. The only reason the DOD criteria. Apply is cause it. Mixed use requires a special permit. And any special permit within the, you know, the. Have the DOD criteria. Is the wood, you know.
Over six units, I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, six.
So the, the trigger for. The overlay criteria could be the use. Any use that requires a special permit, you know, if, if it's a allowed use by right use. They could choose. PMOD criteria or PMOD zoning, but they wouldn't have to meet any of the criteria, they wouldn't have to. You know. Make powder mill.
Better.
Corner better. They could just say, thanks, I can build my building taller now, thank you. And there would be no permitting process.
Special permitting. No special.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, constant.
So. Like currently, we have our use table, right?
Yeah.
Which we're. Comparing to the underlying zoning use table for commercial. For D and E.
Okay.
And looking at what. I didn't print that out. That one you made. That's fine. Um. You know, what kind of stuff is required to have special permits? From us. Or the zoning board in the underlying district compared to what it would be in the overlay district. To both have control over what's built there. But also to encourage, you know, for other uses, encourage people, you don't need a special permit for whatever it is. For a cocktail lounge. That's my favorite word to that words.
I'm fried. I got it, it's, um.
But the list of uses is. Is formidable because under A. The current language. Added a bunch of uses that. Weren't allowed before.
Right.
The industrial, but yeah, hey, you can do it in this new overlay.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah.
Some of those are as a right.
Yeah.
And had a whole new list. That is totally different than the regular use, but underlying zoning.
Well, that's true, because you couldn't have, remember, you couldn't, you couldn't, that, that was industrial.
Yes.
And we couldn't have residential industrial.
Right.
So we had to, we had to massage that, I think we should just throw A out and just, just. You know, say.
Keep A separate.
Well, I mean, we could, we did what we had to do.
Right.
We don't wanna monkey with that.
No, we're not gonna monkey with A.
Right.
But the point is, when we're looking at the rec, well, D and E specifically.
Yeah. I agree.
If we're gonna use the use table as our, what dictates when we. When they need a special permit.
Yeah.
I mean. Bill and I went through it and we made decisions about what we think should have it and what shouldn't.
Cause, cause part of the deal is, it's currently all business, D and E is all business now, right? Um.
Yeah.
And that allows some things and doesn't allow some other things.
Yeah.
But. You know, if we don't change that, there's no incentive for somebody to come in and. Use the PMOD zoning and thus. Be able to be required to enhance the corner.
No, I agree, I agree with you, I, I agree.
So.
I don't disagree.
We're kicking around stuff like, oh, well, let's allow this use too. And, you know, maybe it deserves a special permit. Maybe some uses are simple enough that they don't need a special permit.
I, I agree, I don't think there's any.
Currently, yes.
All of it?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to.
No, they cut the lines right on the.
So like brewery with ancillary food service, that's now a yes in A, that's why it's on this list. Was a. No. In the, in the, it's a no in the business district. But on our new. PMODE list. It's. A special permit, that's what it was designed as, and it's cause maybe we won't stick a brewery over there.
Yeah.
And theoretically, that's, okay, so a brewery will come in and they'll use the overlay district so that they can be here, right?
Mm-hmm.
But they need a special permit, like, we just need to make the decisions, like, who do we wanna see and who don't we wanna see? And it just feels sort of.
I think a better way.
By the river, what's better than that?
It just feels, I mean, it's like me and Bill being like, what do you think about? A farmer brewery or a fitness club or a marijuana re, well.
By the way, we have some really weird definitions.
We have really weird definitions. Um.
We're stuck with them.
I think we need to have a section with the three of us.
Okay.
Sit down and we go, and we just put it up, well, Zoe help us and, and go through it, and have Zoe do it on the board with us, and we go through. But I think you absolutely have to adjust the, the other tables, I agree, you say this, I, I. Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that, that, the, the. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, that, that makes sense to me.
But there, there, there's still the, a bigger issue of if it's a allowed use.
Yes.
Do we want? PMOD criteria to be required?
By right. They just provide right a lot of use.
It's like, oh, yeah, I can, you know, I can put in my.
General or purpose, for personal service establishment.
Yes, I can put in my personal service step, that's allowed by right.
Yeah.
And, oh, I'm done, I don't have to do anything else, I don't have to fix the sidewalk, well, we.
We want, yes, but then we're not asking them to fix the sidewalk or show us the river or like, uh, give us a easement.
Right, no, but we, we have to be careful with that, because we can't, because remember, i- if, if, we can't downzone.
I know.
And, and, right, right, and just say, okay, now you're subject to this, we have to make it, if you want. That's why you wanna make it tidy.
Right.
Right, if you wanna choose the overlays. Dimensional tables and, you know, have more.
Right.
Building coverage or whatever it allows, I don't know. Then. You know, and as a right use, would be able to do that without any give back.
We just.
But the thing I've been thinking through is, you know what? Frankly, there are probably. Some little ones, little projects that, you know. Fine, just do a little project, you wanna convert that existing. You know.
Convert it to that.
Set and butterfly to a, a accountant office, you know, who cares?
What do we care, right?
Right, we shouldn't, you know, it should just happen and be done, but. If you wanna, you know. Knock down hall's floors. And, you know, build a fifty thousand square foot. Allowed use, well, you know what? Something that big, even if it's a Y, I kinda wanna talk about it. So maybe there's a size limit.
We've been talking about. Including size, again, so this is.
Size has a special permit. In the PMOD.
Well, you, you mean, there's a certain scale.
Yeah.
Or triggers of. Well, that's form based, that's like, that's going to form based, we go by form based code. We're gonna need to go, we're, we're gonna need to go to fall.
No.
Get this right.
Not necessarily.
Since we're all very tired, do you want me to skip talking about historical names?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, well, now my head's, I'm still wanna read it, I'm still hung up on the sixty percent.
Well, it's a good idea.
It's a good, it's a necessary idea.
I know.
All right, well, maybe.
And when someone says.
I, I like the over twenty. Yeah.
You know. Just nothing's gonna be over twenty there. Unless we make the buildings fifty five feet high.
It, it would be, they would be.
But what river views?
I don't know.
I know, I know, believe me, I think a lot about the river views. And the, uh, and the, the.
Sixty percent, sixty percent with river view?
Primary facade, it's gonna be great.
But, you know, I mean, there's also, you know, there, there's also the housing issue of. You know, you combine parcels, you can build a lot of house.
Yes, if you combine it.
But currently, it's not allowed, by the way, so another use thing is. A mixed use is mixed use. With. Eight housing units, eighteen housing units, eight hundred housing units, you know.
Or redefine mixed use?
We can define a maximum number. Because, you know.
Let's the three of us meet in the next couple of weeks.
Relatively small scale.
It gets very scary.
Especially along the river, so, you know.
But it's doable.
I know.
It's all doable, and, and this is gonna, this stuff, this is gonna work, I mean, the water. Situation notwithstanding. These small scale developments are gonna. You know, little by little go, I mean. Good. Let's meet the three of us really count.
Well, I'll tell you all about the his.
I do wanna.
Listen, no, it's, Mike, but it's not grace.
Well, you got what I sent you from the.
That's what I've been looking at, and let me tell you, the, the names that are popping up are not really things that you really want your subdistricts to be called. The cellulose products. Or the Americans. Cyanamide company. Dewey and Halley Chemical.
The grace adjacent property.
I'm just saying, it's, I don't know.
Don't you have somebody famous who went through there or something?
Nathan Pratt.
Who?
Nathan Pratt.
Great, a great American.
The road walked by.
Yeah, the road district.
The road went through.
I went through, I mean, like, I really, I also. I also took it upon myself to research the, uh, indigenous history marker, markers proposal from the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance.
Yeah.
Also not great, we don't really have anything that we really wanna call subdistricts, I'm just saying, none of these names.
Views made of people.
Yeah, it's like, what, like, it gets very.
Okay, all right, all right.
I, I'm not sure.
It was just an idea.
No, I, I don't, I mean, I get it, but. When you actually get down to it. I don't know. A lot of it has to do with powder mills, which, spoiler alert, we already called it that, so I don't really know.
Yeah, but what do you do with powder mills?[1616.94] We just blow them up every five.
Yeah, there was a lot of.
We don't wanna do that, we don't wanna say that.
A lot of history explosions.
Yeah, all right, can we say like the musket district and the.
No muskets.
No, we could say it.
If you make.
We can say anything.
District, yeah.
The military industrial complex.
Yeah, there you go.
Warlord.
The M I C district.
And the best thing I found is that there was a community garden somewhere at one point.
There you go, garden district, I love it, there's one already. And the musket district, you got two.
And then the chemical district and the synthetic rubber district. But it has such a nice ring to it, synthetic rubber.
No, there's no ringing in rubber, that's just kinda dull, it's more of a fun.
Wow, I I like Powder Mill district.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, or maybe we should just keep it A, B, C, D.
Well, I I mean, there's like, the laundry service was established, but I don't know where. Yeah, the laundry.
You can't call a laundry.
Laundry issues. That would say some places. Oh, any of these things, and the other option, well.
I live on Starch Avenue, I don't know, I wanna, like, is it, isn't the laundry dis- district in Manhattan like super nice or?
Yeah, right, it's now, yeah.
Right, so.
It would be the same on Powder Mill Road, I have no doubt.
No longer. Wasn't there anybody famous you dug up that was good that didn't do some, oh, terrible?
Uh, there's somebody, Cooper.
This was industrial.
I said Hooper.
He's the guy who jumped out of the plane with like three hundred thousand dollars in a parachute.
No, that's D B, that's D B Hooper.
We don't, we don't make that station, D B Hooper, he was, he was his brother. Now we got three. The Hooper district.
There's, there's a hundred dollar bill somewhere around there.
So, I don't, maybe not so good.
Didn't Babe Ruth do go fishing or something?
Historical people didn't tell me anything about Babe Ruth going fishing.
But he wasn't drinking here.
If you want to start making stuff up, I'm very good at that.
No, no, I don't wanna make it up, I just wanna clarify some historical facts for our, for, to make our districts more palatable.
We call it the Sudbury district, since we took it from Sudbury.
They're not very popular anymore after the council thing. We got Babe Ruth district, his old fishing hole. So we got that, we got the.
Yeah, well, that's.
Makeup stuff.
Fires, explosions, and floods.
It's just like the, it's like the Four Horsemen.
Yeah.
Oh, jeez. Fires, explosion, and water lots.
The Locust district.
Yeah, the Locust, it's like, it's like.
Oh, yeah, no, I looked, I I marked, where's my map, I marked my map.
Fires, explosion.
Look, I marked the map, so like, um.
And contamination, what could be better?
So like, uh.
Adjourn this meeting.
Is anyone?
We should adjourn.
Do we even need to worry about them?
I marked some of the, you know, historical things and where they are, so like, indeed. There is, what number is that, uh, sixty, it's um. The American Powder Company, and then later American Cyanamide, Cyanamide and Chemical Workers Housing. So we can do like chemical workers housing.
That's romantic.
Yep.
It's going very east Germany.
Uh, what's my?
Chemical housing.
Yeah, that's all there there was here, unfortunately, except all Alfonso's, maybe we can change E to, before it was, uh, the Elks, it was Alfonso's Restaurant.
Was there any reason about the S H, uh, upstanding?
Firstly, I wanna name.
Probably not.
He's a victory district.
I I I did, I did circle victory, cause there's Victory Plaza.